We are back to 113 and we left off with an amendment to be proffered by Senator Tom Ada. On 113.
Correct.
For Duck Duck?
Yes, thank you, Madam Speaker.
From now on, when I see you, Senator, you're gonna...
The floor...
Man Duck Duck, see Senator Ada.
Madam Speaker, I'd like to move an amendment on Bill 113-32. And the amendment has been passed out and basically what the amendment does is on page three, starting at line 20, it makes it very clear that the provisions contained in section 14 regarding service and reporting requirements of Chapter 10 Public Law 31-233 shall not be applicable. In lieu of this requirement, the grantee shall provide the Guam Visitors Bureau and the libraries of each elementary school of the Department of Education access to the produced episodes funded herein. The use of these episodes by these entities shall be consistent with all applicable copyright laws and these episodes shall not otherwise be distributed, reproduced, or reconstructed without the express written consent of the grantee. And this language, Madam Speaker, that I've just read off is that instead of Duck Duck Incorporated having to give 1,270 hours of in-kind service, however that may be defined, apparently there's already been discussion with the Guam Visitors Bureau regarding how the in-kind services is to be exchanged and that's been mutually agreed upon and so this language is being put in just to make it very clear then what the in-kind services would be. So I would ask my colleagues to favorably consider this amendment. Thank you.
Okay, Senator Ada, we'll go ahead and continue with your amendment. They're just making copies of it? Yes, yes. And but is it okay to continue the discussion? Senator Yamashita, have you on the list or do you need a copy of the amendment? Okay, you may proceed then.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I think that that amendment will help clarify the give and take and I think it will also help protect the interest of the folks who are developing these productions. And I'm wondering, Madam Speaker, if the mover of the amendment would be open to amending his amendment to include, what I heard was copies would go to, I think it was GVB and then to each of the libraries of the public schools. I'm wondering if we would amend it to include the Head Start program as well as our public libraries. So to have the productions at all places where the children, particularly Head Start and our younger audiences in the public libraries, may be able to access the viewing of the, excuse me, the episodes when the teachers and/or librarians are determined to play it.
On the amendment, on the amendment to the amendment in this case now? No objection, so that means, can we please? Sure. And Senator Yamashita, can you please make sure that we have your amendment also as to where then, now that you have a copy of it? Okay. of the amendment and to then proffer an amendment to the Ada amendment. And that way everybody will be able to follow along. Senator Yamashita?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. So the amendment proffered by Senator Ada, let's see, it is in lieu of the requirement the grantee shall provide the Guam Visitors Bureau, comma, the Guam Public Libraries, that's my proffered amendment, and then to continue on with and the libraries of each elementary school of the Department of Education, comma, and the Head Start program. And Madam Speaker, I know the Head Start program is a part of the Department of Education, but we have not yet gotten to the point where really Head Start has really merged of DOE. So Head Start is, I mean even the budget is outside of the DOE budget because of the funding source and different reasons, but so, actually I don't know if I'm out of order right now, but the libraries of each elementary school do not necessarily reach the Head Start programs. That's my main point. And so the Head Start program actually has their own central office inside central office and if we provided them copies of those episodes, then the director can ensure that her 20 classrooms can rotate, circulate, or share. So again, it's the Guam Public Libraries after the Guam Visitors Bureau and then the Head Start program after Department of Education.
Okay, so everyone get the amendment. Senator Limtiaco, do you want to speak on the amendment to the amendment? Okay, so on the amendment to the amendment, are there any objections? They're being non-ordered. So now on the amendment, Senator Limtiaco and then Senator Agun.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. If the author would kindly yield to a question regarding this amendment?
Senator Ada, do you yield to the question? Well, can you ask the question first and then I'll ask the senator if he'll yield?
The question is, is the language in the amendment shall not otherwise be distributed, reproduced, or reconstructed without the express written consent of the grantee. The question would be, does the language here, does it expressly require that any use of this money that is, or excuse me, this product that is being funded by taxpayer dollars, is the intent of this language in here to require payment for use of any of this product?
Senator Ada, do you yield to the question?
Yes, I think the, well actually the intent here was to prevent the possibility of, for example, the production being taken by your visitor channel, which is a for-profit operation, to be able to then use this product for their own financial gain. However, it does not, in making reference to copyright and all that, as long as it's going to be used by public institutions such as the libraries, DOE, and GVB, which they can take when they go on their promotion tours and be able to show that, you know, it can do all those things, but they cannot make this thing available to some other for-profit business and be able to then make a profit on it. I don't know if that answers your question.
Senator Limtiaco?
Thank you. No, I'm not sure it does and my main concern is that the product, the episodes that are being produced are being funded by taxpayer dollars and what I'm concerned of is that the Duck Duck Goose Inc. company would otherwise resell these episodes, otherwise make money. They're a nonprofit organization and I guess I would take time to just discuss this now that, you know, this company, Duck Duck Goose Inc., and the production of this, of these episodes for, although be it a very good cause to promote and perpetuate our culture and our language, there are some issues I have with it in the sense that we're taking taxpayer dollars and we're utilizing it to what I view as the purchase, almost of a procurement of the production of these episodes. And what I see in doing such is that we're basically sole sourcing the production of episodes of a cultural show called Niihi. And I'm concerned with that because normally you would expect that to go through some sort of procurement process as opposed to it being written in legislation saying, here's $127,000, go and produce this. And by the way, your company is selected by this legislative body to do that and we're putting it in law and we're writing a bill specifically to do that. In addition, we just passed, or we just moved two other bills to our third reading file that gives $50,000 each to organizations that have been around for 11 years. $50,000 to each of them to Gefpago and Horaal, all of which we've seen products. My child is a product of Horaal as well. She went there one year as well and we paid fees for her to go to that school and we gave that organization $50,000 to help promote our language and culture as well. And yet this bill is asking us to give almost three times as much money to produce videos and once again, very well-intentioned videos, promotion of our culture and promotion of our language. We're not arguing the end product of what is coming out of this. What we should be talking about and recognizing is that we're attempting to sole source the production of these videos and there is no reason why a Horaal or a Gefpago couldn't do this as well. KGTF, for example, receives funding from the general fund as well. They could also produce this. Who knows how much they could produce it for? Maybe it will cost more or cost less, but either way, I think that any one of those entities should have an opportunity to bid on a production of episodes that promote our culture, promote our language. And this bill is sort of bypassing that whole process. And I'll say it again, not because it's not for a good cause, it's absolutely for a good cause, but the method in which we're going about it seems to not be consistent, especially when this body goes through great lengths to try and limit or regulate our individual agencies on whether they can enter into certain amount of leases or whether they can approve qualifying certificates. How is this any different? It just seems as though we are being selective on how we're going to go about distributing our taxpayer dollars and whether or not this body is in the best place to determine whether that applies or not. And I'm concerned about that. And specifically I'm concerned about, you know, this amendment, which is not very clear on whether or not we're saying, here's $127,000, $27,000 of the government's money, go and produce these episodes. And by the way, in the original bill, in section three, or excuse me, section 16 appropriation, there is no specific final product of what is to be produced. It does not specify in the bill how many of these episodes. It does mention in the legislative findings, but that's not in the actual section that puts the individual specifications on the appropriation. The funding authorized herein is to cover production costs for a cultural children's television program. The funding authorized herein shall be used specifically by Duck Duck Goose or Duck Duck Goose Inc. towards the cost of production, coordination, scripting and research for each episode, and production talent and set materials. Period. Doesn't say whether they're going to produce one, two, or 20 episodes. Furthermore, in the legislative findings of the bill, and Madam Speaker, I'm sorry if I'm going, stop me if you want me to just focus on the amendment. I can speak on the main motion. I could end here in regards to the amendment and I'll speak further on the main motion, but just unless you want me to continue and I can just finish it all right now.
I will allow you to continue.
Okay, thank you, Madam Speaker. So going back to the legislative findings in the bill, it specifically references television and online video. There is really no tangible product per se. Obviously, the video is a tangible product in the sense that you could at least see it, but there is no like actual, I'm holding a DVD of this production that I could, you know, play at my leisure. Are we to assume that we're just going to go to the YouTube channel and stream it or are we going to use the production of these videos that was paid for by taxpayer dollars and go out and work with a television station to have these episodes aired? And based on the popularity of these shows, which will, it will be great. I saw the video myself during the public hearing. This is an excellent production. However, along with good productions and a lot of viewers comes advertising rights. People want to advertise because they know their children are watching the show and there's a revenue stream associated with it. You know, so I'm concerned on whether or not, a couple of things. One, we're sole sourcing the production of this entire, sole sourcing, who gets to do this production? Obviously, we have a lot of great cultural organizations, not-for-profit organizations that have been around for 10 to 11 years. And if I'm correct, as I checked on Department of Revenue's website, Duck Duck Goose Inc. is not on the listing of nonprofit organizations as of March 18th of this year. Now, I understand that they did register as a nonprofit as of February 27th, 2013. So we're going to give an organization that has been around for four months, three times as much money as we gave organizations that have been around for 11 years. And that's of a major concern for me because we've seen the actual products of Horaal and Gefpago and although we've seen the video of Duck Duck Goose Inc., you know, that's a concern of mine and it should be a concern of every senator in this body because we're talking about three times as much money as we're willing to give organizations that have been around for a long time and that are probably just as capable of producing a culturally oriented video that promotes our culture and our language and have shown us over the course of 10 years or so in each of these organizations that they can do it successfully. As we saw during the public hearing with two of these very young children, not only conversing with our senators in Tomorrow, but also singing in our language and, you know, and you can see that product and you can see the success of it. So Madam Speaker, I object to the amendment in the sense that if we are going to allow taxpayer dollars to be used to fund this, there should be no restrictions on the use of any government entity that would otherwise find a good reason to use it, such as Head Start or any organization for that matter. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
There is an amendment and there's also who would like to speak on the amendment that has been amended. Senator Agun?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, and good afternoon to you and my colleagues. I just would like to echo the one primary concern of the previous speaker and that's the cost. If there's any cost associated with having access to this particular production. And the way I read it, it says, shall provide the following entities access to the produced episodes funded herein. And it really comes down to, first of all, what's the definition of access? Is access electronically or is it a copy or a version of that? And obviously, I may be reading too much into the details, but it goes back to the investment of $127,000. You know, Madam Speaker, I think it's only right for the government, especially in light of some of the entities that have been identified in here, whether it be the Guam Visitors Bureau or public libraries or the libraries in each of the elementary schools within the Department of Education, that they at least be provided a copy of this particular production at no cost. And that really is a concern that I have with regards to how the language is being presented because access could mean, yes, you can have access, but you would have to pay a cost of, let's say, $10 per production or $10 per episode. I'm not gonna, I'm gonna give the individuals associated with Duck Duck Goose, and I'm gonna say that one more time, Duck Duck Goose, I'm gonna give the owners of that organization, you know, the benefit of the doubt because they recognize that in fact they're going to be utilizing public funds for the production of many of these items. So I'm hoping that access, the definition of access, would translate into slash no cost to the people of Guam because that's nowadays with the wonders of technology, you can provide either a disc or you can provide something that is at a minimum cost for any particular organization, but at least they would be able to have a physical copy or electronic access to some of the produced videos in this case. So Madam Speaker, I just, for the record, I just wanted to express my concern that I certainly hope that access to these produced videos or clips does not translate into any cost for the government entities that were identified previously. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
We're gonna take a 15-second legislative time off recess.
Legislators back in session. I believe we were with Senator Lim Tiaco last. Senator Uggan, did you wish to speak? All right. Senator Respecho, on the amendment.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker, and I would be very careful and clear to speak just on the amendment as amended, and I will not take any liberties to speak outside of the amendment as amended. Mr. Speaker, I rise in full support of the amendment as amended, only to say that this is one example of how you have one of our own trying to go to make a piece of legislation before this body much better, and that's exactly what the mover of the amendment has done. He's proposed that in this particular case, we don't subject this nonprofit organization to the service and reporting requirements of Chapter 10 of Public Law 31-233. If you recall, Mr. Speaker and colleagues, this provision required all these nonprofit organizations who receive money from the tourist attraction fund to provide in-kind services to the Guam Visitors Bureau. And as this proposal was originally presented to us, it was far-reaching, so broad, so much so that they could require these nonprofit organizations to file files at the Guam Visitors Bureau, or to clean the GBB offices, or to participate in any activity sanctioned by the Guam Visitors Bureau. So what we did at the time, Mr. Speaker, is we made sure that their in-kind services be specific to the services that they provide pursuant to the grant. Now, in the case of this amendment as amended, we know that to provide, to require this nonprofit organization to provide service requirements to GBB, we could very well see that they might be asked by GBB to do some production, because that's consistent with the services of this grant. But in this case, we know that it's not feasible and not practical to have this nonprofit organization provide the kind of services consistent with their grant, simply because we don't want this nonprofit organization, or any other nonprofit organization, receiving this grant from the tourist attraction fund, to be abused by the Guam Visitors Bureau. And so what this amendment basically does, it says, "in lieu of this requirement, this nonprofit organization shall make these productions available to the elementary schools, to the public libraries." And I appreciate how it was amended, so that we can also reflect the Head Start program and other outlets where our young children can be exposed to this kind of education, educational material. And so I'll stop here, Mr. Speaker, because I don't want to speak outside this amendment as amended, only to say that I support what's being proposed to us, and I certainly appreciate how the good author is bringing clarity, so that this particular nonprofit organization is not going to be subjected to any potential abuses by the Guam Visitors Bureau. So I thank you for the opportunity to express my support for this amendment as amended.
Thank you very much. Senator Snikels, did you wish to speak on the amendment as amended? Okay, please.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I do have some other concerns that I'll speak to on the main motion, however, on the amendment as amended, or as proffered, rather. I share, specific to the amendment, I share the concerns of Senator Lim Tiaco. When we're using public funds, the people's money, and we're having the people invest their money in the production of intellectual property, I would reckon to assume that that intellectual property belongs to the people, not to the organization. Because otherwise, the organization would have developed intellectual property on its own, with its own resources. But since it's using the people's resources, that intellectual property should belong to the people. So for us to require that the grantee be the one to control the use of that property, we're basically capitalizing the development of intellectual property with the people's money and giving it away to this organization. And that creates several hazards, Mr. Speaker, one of which is that this organization can then turn around and take that intellectual property and license it to a for-profit entity, even, I mean, just assuming, going worst-case scenario, license it to a for-profit entity owned by the exact same people running the nonprofit side, and then turn around and capitalize it on a for-profit basis. I mean, there's just a lot of hazards that exist by having the intellectual property belong solely to the nonprofit organization. If the people's money is going to pay for it, it should be the people's property, and the people should be the ones licensing it, distributing it, reproducing it, reconstructing it. It should be at the will of the people, not at the will of the organization. And that's my concerns of the amendment as amended, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator. Any other senator wish to speak on the amendment? Speaker Juan Pamp.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker, and I will speak on the amendment. Mr. Speaker, I realize that the law that was passed in the Public Law 31-233 was very specific in terms of monies that we have given out, in terms of what it is that we want these organizations, nonprofit organizations, to give back to the people. And because of the amount of time, it's not as feasible. And in lieu of that, then, of course, now is the fact that we want these stories, cultural stories, as you know, we are, our history is told to us orally, and we want to make these now available to our schoolchildren. And that in itself is giving back to the people, giving back to the community, and what better place to start off than our schoolchildren, with our Head Start children, all the way up to fifth grade, making that available. The other, of course, in which GBB wants to do, and in this particular case, for this particular funding source, is that the Bureau had basically set the grounds in terms of what it is they would like Duck Duck Goose Inc. to do for the Bureau. Now, we have to remember as well is that there are other forms of advertisement and marketing that may be taking place here on the island, to be able to make money out of it, and that shouldn't be the case for this. This is something that's produced culturally to protect, preserve, and perpetuate the culture, the language, the traditions. And this is, as I stated earlier, and is probably the most opportune time that is actually happening, when, you know, yourself and I, as part of Festback, is actually looking into intellectual properties, and of course, we're thinking as well of copyrights that, you know, available, or should be made available. And it's a big discussion that's actually starting to take place amongst our artists here on the island, all of our artisans, whether it's still, or oral, or visual, or what the case may be. But to be able to go around and say then that, yes, we're gonna make these, let's say, these CDs available, and you're gonna have somebody take that and reconstruct it, you know, do it in a way that they feel maybe in their own perspective of how they would like to market this, and maybe even the translation of it, that we all know is that when you translate certain Chamorra words, you never get the full translation of it, and that's what then the reconstruction would actually mean. So you're taking away what originally was produced, and you don't want that, you want to be able to protect that. And that's what this amendment actually is wanting to do, by saying then that none of these actually could be done without the express written consent of the grantee. But the bottom line here with this is that all of these individuals, all of these nonprofit organizations who have submitted a request for a grant, have actually then read the Public Law 31-233, and know what their obligations are. But in addition to that, GBB has said, "this is what we would like for you to do," and they are complying. The additional thing that we've done as members of this body is to say now that we want to take it into our schools as well, because we want to teach this to our children. So we're starting as early as we could with early education, and that's at our Head Start program, where a lot of these programs are not available for these children, and now we're making it available for them. Now we're making it available for elementary school children. And, you know, and I've spoken to someone who used to do a lot of production, and $127,000 just, you know, won't cut it, it's not enough. They've indicated that they are going to have to go out and get additional grant monies, you know, from other organizations to supplant the program. So if there's anything, maybe any other concerns, that maybe we could do to tighten up this language, is to probably go in further up in this same section, and really indicate at least what we're talking about are the 20 episodes. And that's what's applicable in this case, are the 20 episodes. So I do rise in support of the amendment. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other senator wish to be heard on the amendment? Senator Pangolinan.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, if I, if I haven't missed anything, the amendment continues to include the last sentence of that, of the proposed amendment, which is, "the use of these episodes by these entities shall be consistent with all applicable copyright laws, and these episodes shall not otherwise be distributed, reproduced, or reconstructed without the express consent of the grantee." Is that correct?
That's correct. The only amendment that was made to the amendment was to include Head Start and preschool, early education.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I certainly, you know, understand all the different perspectives on this and the concerns that have been viewed. I come from a, maybe a little bit different. I certainly, I know, understand, and the perspective that one may have when you look at this purely from, they're paid for by public funds, and therefore, you have no further right to the work product after, of course, you get paid for it. Well, as we mentioned, I think that you can justify that perspective, given what is being proposed. But when you take, for me personally, when you take that one additional step of, this is not just a product, this is, goes into intellectual property and intellectual rights, I mean, property rights over intellectual property. And so even though, in my perspective, the government, through its grant program and processes, has paid for the production of these, I think the intellectual property right still remains with the grantee. And that the exchange of the production with the payment is what would be consistent with what is originally understood to be the primary use of that work product. So the episodes, in this case, being from Guam GBB, payment coffers, in terms of the hotel occupancy tax, from the government coffers, I don't want to say GBB, it's all government, and I think that it recognizes the right of this legislature to appropriate collections of revenues from this government to what it deems is appropriate, if agreed to by the governor, and then is expended and awarded. But GBB can have use of that property based upon the understanding of the grant, and what it's gonna use for. But the right to that product, from the intellectual property right perspective, I think, still belongs to the grantee. I mean, I think they still need to control it, and when use of that production production, which includes, of course, the individual's right to that production, which should still be controlled by the owner, the producer, the writers of that product, especially if it's going to be used for other purposes than the terms and conditions of the grant. So I certainly do not want to be able to shortchange this author, this grantee, in the development of these work products, in the development of these 20 episodes, to now give GBB, to now commercially market that. I think that they still retain that right, even though it's been paid for by an appropriation or a grant from government sources. So I certainly support the amendment. I think it's, for me, I think this is normal in terms of protecting one's copyright, one's intellectual property right on things like this. And so I support the amendment, and I think that our own people deserve that protection. And I don't think this is really that out of the ordinary with regards to products like this and productions like this and grants like this. Thank you, Senator Masi.
Thank you very much, Senator Panglinen. I'm sorry, but was the opposition an objection, Senator Luntiako, or was it just a...? It was an objection. Okay. Anybody else wish to be heard on the amendment? Any other wish to be heard on the amendment? Do I understand that you wish to, Senator Luntiako?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I'd like to withdraw my objection to the amendment and proffer an amendment to the amendment.
Let's hear it.
On the line items where it says the grantee shall provide the Guam Visitors Bureau and the libraries of each elementary school of the Department of Education, starting with Guam Visitors Bureau, we'll strike out Guam Visitors Bureau and libraries of each elementary school of Department of Education, and we will insert all government entities.
On the amendment to strike out GBB and libraries, and in its place, put all government entities, there's an objection. Anybody wish to speak on it, or just there's an objection? On the amendment, I see Senator Aggins' hand, and then Speaker Wampat.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Just a question with regards to the proposed amendment, because the way it reads, or the way it would read, "shall provide all government of Guam entities access to the produced episodes funded herein." And I think it needs to be qualified with a, upon request, something to that effect, because obviously, the way I would read it, verbatim, is that upon the production of anything, that copies would have to be provided to, let's say, parks and rec, which may not need it, or some of the other entities which may not utilize the... Someone mentioned in the hallway that the Department of Corrections. But, you know, really, that's my concern, Mr. Speaker. We don't want them to unnecessarily incur an additional expense or processing if, in fact, these government agencies would not need it.
Senator Luntiako.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. And my amendment does not change the original language of the original amendment proffered by Senator Ada, so I'm not in a position to define what access means, or what the intent of the original amendment was.
Mr. Speaker, I did recommend the insertion of the words "upon request," because that would apply to all government of Guam agencies, and then upon their request, then this would be provided accordingly based on the language. So that's my only concern, and I believe I already expounded on that portion, is that if you give it to every, I believe we're still at 48 government of Guam agencies, then it said "shall provide." Those are the key terms in this particular section that would require that this Duck Duck Goose provide a copy at least of this production.
We're amending on top of the amendment, on top of the amendment.
So I withhold then. I withhold any amendment to the amendment to the amendment.
Thank you. Senator, he's already withdrawn it. Senator Yamashita on the amendment. Speaker Wampat, and then Senator Yamashita.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. You know, Mr. Speaker, originally, when it was amended by, you know, Senator Yamashita to include, of course, the Guam Public Libraries, the Head Start program, and now, of course, we're taking that out, we all felt that that was the most appropriate places where we would like to see these stories go to. I mean, just think what it is. Duck Duck Goose, what is that? I mean, they cater to children. And I'm just trying to think on the top of my head what different departments and agencies that we have who would truly want then to have copies of, you know, these stories, these programs that are just not related to their mission and their objectives and their goals of what they want to do, unless it's one specific person or a parent in that department says, oh, can you request for that now, because then I want to have access to that, so I can take it home and give it to my children, show it to my children. I mean, you know, and that's, to me, a waste of resources. And, of course, I'm not going to do an amendment to an amendment or anything, but just for discussion purposes, that, you know, to reconsider and to say that then if this is going to be made available to departments and agencies with the government of Guam, that they be agencies and departments that, you know, their mission is related to what this program is all about, and not just for the sake of, you know, sending them out. And I'll give you an example. You know, I remember when I was a school principal, and there's something in the union contract that says every teacher, regardless what they're teaching, whatever the discipline is, they're all entitled to this, 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 and this. And I remember my art teacher told this to me when she put in a request. And I said, but that's not related to your subject area at all. And I says, I don't care whether it's related to my subject area. It's because the contract says that's what I'm supposed to get, then I want it. You have to give it to me. And that's what we want to avoid, because to me, it'll be a waste of resources. And I like the discussion to go on. I like to think about it. And I think this whole amendment has become so convoluted, I really think we need to sit on recess and come up with an amendment that I think we can all agree to. Thank you.
Thank you very much. There's been an objection to the amendment, and we will call the question after Senator Yamashita.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I actually agree with the amendment being proffered, and this is the reason why. What better way than to have every department or agency access this type of product, and then hopefully those particular departments or agencies can provide feedback, produce their own DVDs or own productions in light of their mission. For example, you talk about Department of Agriculture, they can see, wow, we can introduce different planting, different principles of agriculture, biology to the young family. EPA can do the same for the environment. GPD, GFD, all about safety. Homeland Security is about safety. Department Chamorra Fair is actually, that is just very logical in itself. DYA, we can teach our kids about respect and about relationships and how to work with each other. And it just, for me, it actually does make a lot of sense. Now, I will agree, you know, upon request, we don't waste resources. But if the idea is we're worried that this is taxpayer monies, and we want to make sure that the taxpayer continues to have access through the agencies, this just really makes a lot of sense. It really gives way to creativity, a notion of ingenious, and for a way to tag with everybody, and how to further develop and multiply this really great idea about local early childhood production. So I agree with the amendment. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much. Anybody else wish to speak on the amendment? Do you wish to close, Senator Luntiako?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Speaker. And just to echo the sentiments of the retiring speaker, that's exactly what it is. If you look at Duck Duck Goose Inc.'s Facebook site, they outline a wide array of different focus areas, including sustainability, healthy ways of living. They promote, inspire deep love for our water, land, and people. There's no shortage of agencies that could, in one way or the other, utilize this material as an educational resource. And the retiring speaker hit it right on the nail. That's the entire point. Now, we can go through step-by-step recess and identify every single agency that could benefit from this program, and sure enough, we end up with a two-page amendment that specifically identifies every agency. But I believe the amended, as it stands, would allow for any of the agencies that it's applicable to to utilize it. And that was the whole point, as opposed to just limiting it to the agencies. whole point, as opposed to just limiting it to the agencies that was proffered in the original amendment. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you. There's been an objection. All those in favor of the amendment, please indicate by raising your hand. On, on the Limtiako amendment, that's the one that's been objected to. On the main motion. Oh, wait, we have to go back to your amendment, right? Senator Ada?
Amendment that has been amended and amended.
And on the Ada amendment, is there any objection to the Ada amendment, or?
Mr. Speaker, if I can just, given that the amendment just passed, I want to make a motion to allow the legal counsel to make a technical amendment, because if I'm understanding what the rule of the body is to make these productions available through all departments and agencies, GVB is not a government agency, Mr. Speaker. The KGTF is a public corporation, the public libraries, they, they have their different structures, and so, if you want to fix up what you just did, otherwise, the amendment that just passed, we would be, we would not be giving these copies to the very entities that, in the case of GVB, that paid for it, as well as what Senator Yamashita wanted to do, to make this available throughout the public libraries, as well as other quasi-government type agencies. PBS is a public corporation. So, I just offer that for your disposal, Mr. Speaker.
Any objection? On the Ada amendment, any objection?
Actually, no, you're right, because we've talked about this quite a bit, and I think that, and this is a very simple one.
He would do his "upon request."
Because, yeah, yeah. But what I wanted to amend here is just to indicate what is in the committee report, where it says the use of these episodes, is to say the 20, because everyone kept talking about 20, and, but it's never made reference to the actual law itself, so, and I, and maybe wherever it's appropriate, where it says the use of these episodes, I wanted to put the 20 episodes. Further up, where it says just before notwithstanding, there's a research for each episode, then the 20 episodes again. That's all I wanted to make sure.
So, wherever episode shows, it's, there should be the number 20 before it. Is there any objection to that? Senator Limtiako?
Just a point of information, or point of clarification, if the author, or the author of the amendment would yield. I don't see the reference to 20 in Section 16 at all, although it is, I think, referred to in the legislative findings and intent. So, you're, just, just so I understand it correctly, you're adding the 20 into Section 16?
Yes, and, Mr. Speaker, I yield. And, and yes, and I think it's only fair, that you're right, if it's being discussed in the intent, and it was also in some of the committee reports, that it would be, the most appropriate thing is to put down exactly, in the force of law, that we're going to give out these 20 episodes to anyone, I mean, the departments and agencies or entities of the government, that it is 20, and no more than 20, because if, by chance, they're going to produce 40, or 50, or 60, we're not giving all of that, you know, to the government, because that would be now on their own and beyond the 20.
And, and just, just for a further point of clarification, in Section 16, although I believe you're referring to the amendment, the, there is no mention of the 20 in the, so, in, when we go to the main motion, you'll make that amendment, too? Because it doesn't specifically refer to it?
I think we'll make it a technical amendment, well, a substantive amendment that the legal counsel will have authorization to correct. Wherever episode shows, it'll make 20.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
There's, is there any objection to that, the legal counsel making 20? All right. On the, on the main motion, I think I saw the, right. On the main motion, I think it was Senator Limtiako, Senator Snicholas, Senator Uggins, and then Senator McCready.
So, you're not providing the physical, but can you make sure that the...
You can make that amendment if you wish. When you, your turn on the main motion. All right, can, everybody? Senator, we're still on the air at this point. Senator Limtiako, you have the floor. On the main motion.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I just want to go back to items that were discussed earlier on the floor, and, and just to expound upon some of the discussions on the floor by previous speakers, and specifically, there was mention of, of, of working with GVB in order to determine what the needs of GVB would be as it pertains to the production of the episodes. There was also, you know, mention of determining how GVB is to use this end product, and, you know, this goes back to my main concern, and, and for the, for the, for a minute, I'd just like to bifurcate the issues, and once again, reiterate, that there's nothing but good intentions of the bill, and what it, what it looks to do and accomplish i- in the grand scheme, to promote our culture and to promote our language, and to also promote healthy, healthy lifestyles, as well as inspire a deep love of our water, land, and people. I want to bifurcate these issues, because there, there is absolutely an importance to that portion of this bill. And, and so, if we could just leave that side alone for a minute, and just discuss specifically what this bill, outside of that, attempts to do, we can further dissect it and really look at it for what it is. And, and the way I see it is that GVB is asking for a specific type of product, and this product is in the form of educational production of episodes, and there's a reference to specifically how many of these episodes, as it refers to in the legislative findings. And if we just stop right there, oh, and, and then, of course, there's an issue of a, an appropriation for it, of $127,000, and if we just stop right there, that just sounds like a procurement. That sounds exactly like a procurement. We are paying to get something, but in this, in the way this bill is currently written, it doesn't even tell us what we're getting. It does say that the money will be used for the following items. The money will be used for, to cover production costs for cultural children's television program, for a cultural children's television program. And although we can infer that it means tomorrow culture, it doesn't specifically say that. It just says cultural children's television program. But I think we all understand that it is a tomorrow cultural children's television program. It also goes on to say, "The funding authorized herein shall be used specifically by Duck-Duck Goose Inc. towards the costs of production, coordination, scripting, and research for each episode, and production talent, and set materials." In Section 16, there is absolutely no mention of what product or what end, end item is going to come of this, nor does it specifically say how many of these end items. So, either it needs to be amended, or there's a specific, it was just left out, and so, further emphasizing that it needs to be amended. But, but, once again, let's just step back, and let's, let's bifurcate the cultural aspect of it, because we all recognize how important that is, and just take the procurement side of it. What we're actually doing, we're, we're providing money that's purchasing a set of episodes that Duck-Duck Goose Inc. will own all the intellectual property, and, and as they should, since they're the ones producing it, but not at the expense of the government. And I would argue that any cultural entity, whether it be Hurrau, or Gefpago, or KGTF, or, or any culturally, tomorrow cultural program, could produce this as well, that they too should be afforded the opportunity to potentially bid on a solicitation for the production of these episodes. And, and it, it may turn out that Duck-Duck Goose Inc. is the best and most qualified, and, and the best apt to do it, and therefore, that they could win that procurement. And, and, of course, you're, you're, not only are you, you're providing that layer of transparency that we all utilize, you know, when, in our discussions, but it also gives a fighting chance for other cultural programs to participate in the same, same thing. So, you know, if, if I could, just reemphasize that the legislature is not in the business of sole sourcing anything, and this appears on its facet to do just that, to identify a specific organization, whether it be profit or nonprofit, doesn't matter, and we're going to direct funds towards that to produce a product that GVB specifically requested, and it would beg the question, well, why doesn't GVB just issue a procurement? They have complete authority on how the tourist attraction fund could be spent, therefore, they could issue a RFP that accomplishes the same exact thing, and, and of course, allow it to, allow other cultural entities, nonprofits, profits as well, to, to do that. And, and then, of course, in that, that RFP, we could, we can make the determination of specifically how many episodes are to be produced, and who will own the intellectual property, and the distribution and reproduction rights, and that could all be spelled out in the procurement, because what we're attempting to do in this bill is really not define any of that at all. And, and that, and, and that has me worried, since we're basically appropriating taxpayer dollars in order to provide a sole source production of what we all agree is a good cultural and language perpetuation video in order to do that. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Limtiako. Senator Snicholas, on the main motion.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, like every single senator on this floor, I think this is a fantastic idea. I think that putting together a children's television program is definitely a step in the right, in the right direction of getting our kids engaged in the culture, getting them entertained. I have a, a daughter, she's going to be three, and my son Caleb's going to be six, and they have these iPads, and they watch Yo Gabba Gabba, they watch Barney, they watch Fresh Beats Band, you know, all these kid programs, and they're singing along, and they're dancing along, and they're really, really loving it. And unfortunately, Warner Brothers pulled the Yo Gabba Gabba and the Fresh Beats Band from Netflix, so I have a crisis in my house right now. My daughter brings her iPad, and she wants to watch Fresh Beats, and I can't do anything about it. But I, I bring that up because I totally understand the value of the programming. I think it's a great thing. I think that, I would love to see my kids watching Niihi, and singing along, and dancing, and, and just getting, learning the culture that way. I mean, Senator Ada, before we broke for lunch, was already singing along with it on the floor. So, it's, it's going to work. It's going to work very well. My concern is, I want to make sure it works. And part of that concern stems from my background in banking, and one of the questions that I was asking in the hearing, Mr. Speaker, with regards to this bill, was, I asked if they have a business plan? And the answer was, no, there is no business plan. There's a budget, but there's no business plan. I asked, is there a monetization plan? Is there a plan that they're going to execute in order to generate revenue so that this, so we're not just taking $127,000 and getting 20 episodes, but we're actually creating something that's going to be sustainable, like Hurrau, like in Netnun Gefpago? Those are sustainable cultural preservation entities. This is a seed operation, it's just getting started. So, do they have the plans in place to, to last? Because it's a great idea, and I want it to last. And when the answer was no, I became very concerned. I became very concerned, because as a senator appropriating money for this program, I'm basically investing the people's money in this venture. And as a banker, would I lend money to a seed startup venture with no track record, no storyboards to show me on the product, and no business plan? Would I lend them $127,000? I, I wouldn't. I don't think any bank would. I don't even think a high-interest, high-risk lender would. I don't even know if Greta would. So, for us to be appropriating that kind of money without those component parts in place to begin with, is not a prudent investment of the people's money. That's my biggest concern, Mr. Speaker. And then, as I, as I, as I looked further into it, and as I read the supplemental, the supplement to the committee report that included additional details, I became more concerned. For example, I looked at this budget that's proposed for this program, and, you know, 80% of the budget of the $127,000, 80% of it, $100,000, is going to pay for personnel. And we're not talking about a whole army of personnel, we're talking about three people. $100,000 is going to go to pay for the project director, the production director, producer, and the project assistant. And I step back and I say, this is $127,000 of the people's money to produce this program, $100,000 of which is going to go to pay for three people? I thought we're, I thought we're paying for production, I didn't know we're paying to, to create jobs. So, that, that concerns me. And then, when I looked at what the production is going to pay for, $127,000, $100,000 of which is going to pay for three people, it's to produce 20 episodes. And I said, okay, 20 episodes. But then I, I read further, and it said, 20 19-minute episodes. And then I stepped back, and I'm like, well, 19 minutes? So, I did some math, and I did 19 minutes times 20 episodes, and that came out to 380 minutes. And I said, okay, we're going to spend $127,000 for 380 minutes. What does that mean? Well, 380 minutes comes out to 6.33 hours. So, we're paying $127,000 to produce 6.3 hours of programming. That comes out to $20,000 an hour. We're spending $127,000, the people's money, so we can produce a show at a rate of $20,000 per hour, but then when you factor in the salary portion of it, of that $20,000 per hour, $16,000 is just going to go to pay for three people. So, I, I just, I, I have a problem with that, Mr. Speaker, because I put my banker hat on, my financial advisor hat on, and I look at this as an invest, from an investment perspective, and there's just a lot of red flags that come up for me. At the very least, we should have a business plan, a monetization plan, we should see some storyboards, we should at least know what this investment is going to purchase. And then we should understand more closely why 80% of $120,000 is going to go to hire three people, when I thought that we're, we're spending all this money to, to produce something, you know? But, but when we look at the budget, the actual production work, the writing and scripting is only $10,000. The music accompaniment is only $1,000. The host of the show is $5,000, for what, for the first host, and for the second host, another $5,000. Just $23,000, that's going to production stuff. $4,000 for props, materials, graphics, sound effects. So, only $27,000 for those things, but $100,000 to pay for three people's salaries to produce this. It's just, it, there's a lot of concerns I have, Mr. Speaker. It's a great idea, I want it to succeed, I want my kids to sing along to Niihi. Shoot, I want us to be able to get this on Netflix and Hulu even, so that we can get our Tomorrowos in the States watching some local programming for a change. But in order for us to, to do this, and in order for me to feel comfortable with it, and in order for me to be okay in... and in order for me to be okay investing the people's money in this, I need to, I need these red flags to be lowered. I need to see a business plan, a monetization plan, some storyboards, I need to understand why we're paying so much to hire three people, and what the true production cost is going to be for all of this, in order for me to feel comfortable. I know it's a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars in the grand scheme of our budget and what we appropriate for, it's not that much, but it's, a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars can do a lot, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, point, point of inquiry. I, I would like to ask, uh, Speaker, where did he get that information?
This was, um, provided to me, it was turned in on June 18th at 10:00 a.m. this morning, uh, to, uh, the, uh, it's on the committee report, it's part of the supplemental, the supplement?
It's a supplemental.
I, I lost my train of thought there. Oh, a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars is a lot of money, Mr. Speaker. It can, you know, we have a lot of needs in this government, and I know that we're, we're, we're right now in a, in a state of flux of, of, do we have surpluses? Where are we supposed to be prioritizing? Should we be borrowing? Should we be, you know, spending on priorities? And just, when it comes to a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars, knowing the state of, you know, some of our bathrooms in the schools that I spoke about earlier, the, the locker room facilities at the Haganea Point, there's a lot of high-need areas that we need to be addressing, Mr. Speaker. So I would feel more comfortable investing the people's money if these concerns were, were alleviated with regards to this particular appropriation. And in light of the fact that this money could be used for other things that do have a clear tangible need, that are our direct and immediate responsibilities. So I just wanted to, um, rise in, in, in serious reservation of this bill, Mr. Speaker, and share some of my concerns. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Senator Snickless. Senator Uggan on the main motion? No? Senator McCready on the main motion? Any other senators wish to be heard on the main motion? Senator Yamashita.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Speaker. As, as usual, the deliberation takes us into corners of the bill as we should, where we should go, to fully discuss what it is we're trying to do, um, whether or not the decisions are sound and well-rounded, and, um, whether or not it's truly in the best interest of the people. And so, as a rather new player to the whole issue of tourist attraction fund, I, uh, I pulled up the, the law, the tourist attraction fund that was, uh, introduced by then Senator like Lulian Guero in 2005, and read what the intent of it was. And as most of us know, it, or all of us know, it was, uh, their taxes, taxes collected from our tourists. And they're put aside so that the legislature would decide how to appropriate it and how to best support tourism. And it was further defined that tourism isn't only in Tuman, but tourism means across the island, where there may be some help needed, so that the whole island can be enjoyed by our visitors. And further than that, it wasn't only the visitors that was addressed in the tourist attraction fund statute, enabling statute, but it also talked about mayors and how they know best what is needed in their villages. So throughout the years, the legislature from the tourist attraction fund has determined that particular appropriations were in the best interest. And we've supported, um, delegations going to Festpac, we've supported the eradication of the coconut rhino, we supported sidewalk lights. Uh, there have been a variety of appropriations that didn't necessarily go through the procurement process. And I really had, I really started thinking about that when it was presented, when this bill, 113, was presented and the concern of the procurement process. And so as I did that research, Mr. Speaker, what I am thinking is, because of the enabling statute, and because it clearly states that we will take these monies from our tourism, from the taxes, and that therefore it shall be the right and the responsibility of the Guam Legislature to determine how these monies will be spent, it seems to me that what we do wanna ask is if Duck Duck Goose Incorporated, if the, if, if that whole package, the whole proposal, has been done thoroughly and well. And if it has been done thoroughly and well, and if we do agree that it is in the best interest of our people and tourism, then that is something that we can consider to support, as we are. But I wanted, I wanted us to go back to the Tourism Attraction Fund Enabling Statute. And I really do believe that what I read was, and maybe there were amendments to it that I didn't capture, but what I did read was, we shall, the government shall take the tourist tax monies, put it in a fund, the Guam Legislature, the Guam Legislature will then decide how to best appropriate those particular, uh, monies to support and grow tourism, which isn't only for visitors, but actually more so it's for our local families. So I, I wanted to bring that context up, and I wanted to throw that on the table, because I think it's important. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Dr. Yamashita. Any other senators wish to be heard on the main motion? Speaker Pangolino.
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I, you know, certainly, um, have the same concerns, questions we have with regards to what was raised by many of my colleagues. But, you know, we're, we're kinda like, one of the objections is, well, you know, we're kinda like sole sourcing this. And, um, I remember putting a bill here that would prohibit sole sourcing of another service that the government buys, and yet I couldn't get the votes to say, don't sole source it, open it up, let people have choices. So not only one side is confined to, well, for this case it works for me, and for the other case it doesn't work for me, because, you know, we're, we're kinda, all kinda have that perspective that when it suits our situation, we'll fall back on our position and say, yeah, no, we shouldn't sole source, but we should be able to sole source on health insurance and things like that, and only allow one competitor and things, you know, but, so, it really is, again, it's hard because of what this project can mean to our people and our local culture. And everybody in here wants to support that. And I don't think anybody in here, no matter what their position is on this bill, doesn't support that. I, I believe that no matter what our perspective is on how we do it, it's like I said this morning, you know, when I was speaking in, in our own language, we may not agree on how to do it, but we agree on what we wanna do. And we want to provide support, uh, opportunity for our local people to participate in the benefits of the tourism industry. We want to preserve our culture, we want to advance it, we want to enliven, you know, make it alive, provide opportunities for others to enjoy it. We all wanna do that. And I think the question is, is this the best way to do it, and does this fit within how we want our government to act? Uh, and all of those are legitimate questions, and I certainly accept all of the questions given by everybody else. Uh, and the red flags that are issued, and the fact that, hey, if these red flags are up there, how do we lower them? I think that demonstrates to me, you know, the genuine desire for everybody in here to try and make this thing work. And so while we continue the discussion, I think we are lowering some of these red flags. Just the fact that we're putting stuff on the record that the individuals who are involved in these projects, and while the individuals themselves as a group may not have a 20-year or a 10-year or a four-year track record, even individuals themselves, uh, in their other capacities, you know, have a long history of contribution and success in their professional endeavors. And for them coming together as an entity and a new entity of that, I kinda like take a look at what they've been able to do, uh, as individuals and as part of other organizations in the past, to make the best judgment call I can, that I can, uh, whether or not this is going to succeed. If you look at the names of some of the others, you have individuals, you know, such as professors at the University of Guam who work with the Trumoral Language, Dr. Evan Flores, you have Dr. Lisa Linden at Tivadot, you have, have Mr. Levin Camacho, uh, you have many, many other successful members, David Flores, you know, who both you and I worked, uh, David was Director of Gida during one of the Ricky Baudaloo administrations. So he knows financing, he knows, uh, what it takes in order to bring a project from start to finish, uh, many, many years of successful record. Uh, so I think when you kinda take a look at all this mix, and we kinda continue to give everybody, uh, the information that we have, that we've been able to come to learn in our discussions individually with some of the principles involved in this project, uh, I think that's gonna contribute to the decision that this body's gonna make, uh, and hopefully contribute to the perspective that we can have with regards to, while this may not be the, the ideal, perfectly packaged project, uh, that all the components are there, all the principles are there, uh, that where we can see something good come out of this. And so I just wanted to present, you know, my perspective. And thank all of my colleagues. I really, truly believe and truly appreciate all of the things that they have raised on this, because I think it's gonna ensure that the principles involved understand what the concerns are of this body, understands what the expectations are, even if they're not in the law, they understand what those expectations are. And I believe they're gonna rise to the occasion, uh, and that they will, uh, you know, massage their project, justify, pre-plan. I know we, we looked at that, you looked at the other costs associated with the production of these projects, take a look at what the budget is at a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars in terms of what the appropriation, uh, would give these individuals. But if you took a look at all of the other in-kind contributions, and you look at what those would be valued at, and you add it up, you know, then you see other people coming into the picture, uh, that will contribute to the success of this project, in my opinion, uh, and, uh, result in something that is going to be beautiful. Pure and simple. Beautiful in terms of production, beautiful in terms of what it will mean for our people, our culture, our language and our heritage, beautiful in terms of what it will mean for our visitors, when they're able to, to see this thing, so, um, and it's not gonna be in the eye of the beholder, it's gonna be beautiful, period.
Thank you very much, Senator. I have Senator Duynus and then Senator McCready.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I also initially rise to agree with the good Senator bringing up the major concerns on this issue, which I share, Senator Limtiaako. And I, I agree with his straightforward approach of bifurcating the issue, and I think the subsequent discussion by members of this body was exactly that. And I will join the chorus of saying, I think this is a beautiful endeavor and has merit to the hilt. Uh, I will say, uh, in, in fairness to, to, in rising to this discussion, uh, with, with the, with a small concern from the retiring Speaker with regard to the, uh, you know, the, the aforementioned, uh, potential legislation, because Senator Limtiaako and others, we, we, we grappled and fought over that discussion of procurement. But, uh, Mr. Speaker, in fairness, that was an RFP, uh, that is put out, and it's competitively bid, and there are, we even chided DOA to make sure that discussion was brought through to say, there is a multiple proposal and an exclusive proposal that's put forward. So the competition exists, uh, at the forefront with regard to that, and just even the fact that it's on a RFP to begin with. So, um, maybe mango and star apple, so I, I just, I just have a concern there in terms of, uh, maybe just staying to this issue, that there, 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 there appears to be that concern, uh, that it appears to be a procurement, uh, but, but the fact of the matter is, under its current construction, uh, especially in light of the new, uh, substitute, uh, information that was put on with the, with clearer descriptions of, of, of the expenditure, I think it has, uh, amongst the body risen, uh, arisen to some concern. Now, I hope springs eternal, I, I certainly agree with the retiring Speaker on the issue that, uh, uh, you know, the membership and those identified, uh, certainly have the qualifications and credentials, uh, you know, to carry out, uh, what is, what is put forward here. So I, that, that, I would never, uh, you know, endeavor to, to at all doubt the credibility as put forward by those individuals and, and their names affixed to that responsibility. Uh, but the concerns remain, and so I just wanted to rise, um, uh, to, to share that, uh, Mr. Speaker, and to share the fact that, uh, I know that, uh, I personally had many hours of, of going over, uh, issues of procurement on other matters before this body with Senator Limtiaako, and, uh, and then we came to that conclusion together. So I wanted to share that, Mr. Speaker. I'll continue to listen to the discussion. Um, you know, perhaps, uh, we will not make the motion at this time, but maybe this is even something that should be considered to, uh, to discuss further in committee. Um, you know, I, I, I don't know that that will happen or that motion will be made, but I'm inclined to support it. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Uh, I rise in support of, uh, the author of this bill, and I commend her on her, her vision of trying to perpetuate the culture through this program. You know, I just recently, about five minutes ago, opened the committee report, the memorandum that was handed out, that, um, the Speaker from Talafoco, now lives in Dedido, was talking about the, the line item of personnel and the first year minimum budget that they do have. And now I'm gonna speak on experience, because I have 15 years in the, the television business that deals with script writing and production and project directors and project assistants. And when I look at, when I look at this, the first thing, the first thing that jumps out at me, um, is the least amount of expense that is being spent here would be on the supplies and the equipment. Theoretically, when you produce something, the most money that you spend on your, your liabilities or your assets, I should say, for the company, would be the equipment. Because the equipment is going to make the product that you want better. Um, it, it doesn't reflect that in this first year minimum budget. As I see it, the personnel is the biggest cost to the taxpayer at a hundred thousand dollars. And I believe the equipment is at $4,000. And then you look at the show hosts one and two. Now, as a, and I don't consider myself a good host, or, you know, just an average host and a sportscaster, but at $5,000 for 20 episodes, a normal host would receive about, maybe a thousand dollars for 20 episodes. And the best hosts on Guam may receive 1,200. So we're paying $10,000 to Host One and Host Two, when we should be paying at a high end at about $2,000. Uh, Mr. Speaker, when it comes to writing script, and I've done this for 15 years, script writing does not cost $500 per episode. If you were to contract script writing out, you could get a good college graduate script writer for about a hundred dollars an episode. I was a columnist for the Pacific Daily News and I got paid less than that. I believe it was somewhere in the, in the area of $50 a column. And that was a publicated column every, every week. We're spending $10,000. And then you go to a production assistant, and it's kinda close to, you know, production assistants, uh, Mr. Speaker, are the ones that do all the work. And they're the ones that, that basically help make the show get off its, get off its feet and get to where it needs to be. So I, I don't really have a problem with a $2,000, um, production assistant. And then you go up to project director, production director, producer, and project assistant. Now a project assistant- Now, a project assistant, Mr. Speaker, is really no different than a production assistant. But this project assistant gets paid $27,000 a year while the production assistant gets paid $100 per episode. I would like to see the project assistant get paid the same as the production assistant when it comes to itemizing the episodes. Because I do believe that that $27,000 should be closer to the $2,000 production assistant that gets paid on a contractual basis. And then you look at the $38,000 and the $35,000 from the project director and the production director slash producer. Mr. Speaker, if you watch TV, if you look at these news anchors and these, these beat reporters that's been doing this for 15, 16, 17 years, if you look at some of these radio hosts that write scripts every day, that have been doing this for 20 years, some of these print ad, magazine paper, newspapers, magazines and newspapers, that have been doing this for years, have never received $38 or $35,000 a year. And they are considered talent. That's the name they give the on-air personality. They call them the talent. In more cases than not, the talent is the highest paid person, then it works his way down to project director or executive producer, project director, production director, project assistant. So, in my experience, the $100,000 personnel cost is, is either extremely misrepresented or these guys are extremely talented and we really haven't seen anything like this on Guam. And then when you come to show host one and show host two, their projections and their amount of pay makes me want to apply as a host. Because $5,000 to host 20 episodes is an extremely lucrative contract to have on Guam as a host in any type of capacity. And I think if you ask any music company or any music or any band, if they get paid $5,000, not many of them will tell you yes. And we have some very good bands. So, I really think that it's kind of backwards here, whereas the $4,000 should be the $100,000 and the $100,000 should be closer to the $23,000 and the $23,000 should be somewhere closer to 5,000 total. So, that's my, that is my only concern. Once again, I do support the intent of the bill, but I would like to see the taxpayers' money, I would like to see the taxpayer getting more for their money and get a greater benefit. Because at the end of the day, we will be judged on our decisions in here after that 20th production is, is complete and what it looks like. And is it going to be worth $100 a year in personnel, $23,000 a year in talent and $4,000 a year in office supplies and equipment? Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator McCready. Speaker Wapatt, on the main motion.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Maybe before I speak on the main motion too, I just want to, if I may, on the amendment that we had passed, that, on the bill now, as I guess as amended, is that the episodes, the access of these episodes would be to include the online access, just before the word access is to put online.
On that amendment, I see Senator Limtiaqo's hand up. All right. Did you wish to speak on the motion to explain your, your amendment?
Yes, because, yes, because earlier in our discussion, when we were talking about how many departments and agencies are or entities, governmental entities, whether they're nonprofit entities, is it worth like, you know, 48 maybe to maybe 55? And to be able to make 20 sets, I don't know how many really, because we didn't even quantify how many, they, they may request 10 sets. And, and we all know is that, you know, these hard copies are, they don't come cheap. But we also want to be able, and because of the technologies, that we want to be able to make it available online. And then it becomes again as well cheaper. So, I just wanted to make sure that it is available to these departments and agencies to be able to get copies of these produced episodes.
All right. The motion proffered by Speaker Wapatt is to insert online. Did you still wish to speak? Senator Limtiaqo.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. And I certainly do understand the intent of, of it to drive down costs. But we just heard from several speakers speak to the cost model that was presented to the, to the body. And if I understood those past speakers correctly, that there's, there's opportunity for a little bit of wiggle room in how the expenses can be divvied up. The last retiring Speaker spoke about what the industry standards for each of these positions are. And if I heard him correctly, they were inconsistent on the high side of industry standards. So, you know, to ask the company to produce, I, I listen to a lot of music and I buy a lot of DVDs and they're, they're not expensive. And I can burn it on the PC that I have, that I'm using right now. So, I don't understand this necessarily concern regarding the cost to do it. But more importantly, whether or not all these government entities that we had addressed in the previous amendment have online access. We're not sure they do. Then again, we're not sure they have DVD players either. But I would hazard to guess that more people have the access to a DVD player than they potentially have access to online. For example, if it was given to a mayor's office and a, and a, one of our citizens of, let's say Marizo, were to go into the mayor's office and say, hey, can I check out the Dug Dug Goose Inc., Episode One, and I'll return it, you know, in a day or two, I want to show my kids this. I have a DVD player, I don't have online access, but can I check that out and I'll return it? And sure enough, you know, they, they would have access to that. So, it's a very small price to pay in regards to producing an actual tangible copy of the episodes to allow for these agencies in order to do it. So, I do object to the amendment, considering the costs associated with doing it relatively low nowadays and the prior speakers have already voiced their concerns about the fact that there is room within this budget in order to pay for the production of these DVDs.
There's been an objection to the amendment online. Anybody else wish to be heard? If not, I'll call the question. All those in favor of the amendment proffered by Speaker Wapatt to insert the word online, please indicate by raising your hand. Do you count seven or eight? Motion passed.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I know there's many discussions on, you know, this bill and on the implications and, and of course, the question now with the additional supplemental attachment to the committee report on, on personnel. And, you know, and I appreciate our two maggets here, of course, and their perspective. I really do. And, and I, and I mean that sincerely. But sometimes, of course, our perspectives, you know, change depending on where and when the wind is blowing because we've seen ourselves do this all the time. I remember the day at one time when we, we thought that we didn't want one department agency to go out and hire four, you know, attorneys at a million dollars when they can probably get them at a cheaper rate at, at the Attorney General's office. But, you know, depending again on the perspective of where we were looking at things and how we were looking at things and which direction the wind was blowing, it determined then the, the final result of that particular argument. And, and you know what? I've been in this business long enough, not just as a, as a member of this body, but even in, you know, in the Department of Education, but in general, we do this all the time. And I appreciate again the, the discussion in terms of costs and, and I don't have that experience and I really can't tell you and, and share what the cost will be for personnel or production or the materials that they need or the equipment that's needed. But the one thing we always do is that sometimes we are our worst enemy here in Guam because we put our people down. We tell our people they're not qualified. And then we want to go off island and spend hundreds and thousands of dollars to send a person off island to get some kind of training when we even have somebody on island who's able to do that. And we never pay our people what they're worth. And so, just looking at the figures, okay, three individuals, $100,000, 27 the balance then maybe for everything else that they're going to do for the production of these episodes. And then to go out to get in-kind contribution of $131,000. You know, it's almost as if though, very similar again to some of the bills that we've passed, is that we would say to them, we're going to give you $25,000. We would like for you to go and get a matching of $25,000. And we did that a couple of months ago, as a matter of fact, at the beginning of this, of the, of this particular year of, of being in the legislature. And, and it has happened. And in this case, this could very well be that matching fund. How many of us are going to step up to the plate right now and honestly say that we are, you know, script writers? How many of us would volunteer for free our time as script writers to go and do this? I don't think there'll be anyone in here who'll be able to do that. And I don't think there'll be that many people out there as well. We like to be able to support our youth and these are young, talented, educated individuals. We know them, they're part of us. And I'm not saying that I'm supporting this because we know who they are, but they are talented and they, they do want to protect. We always talk the talk, but rarely do we walk it. And these are these individuals who are willing to do it. And there are other people who are volunteering their time as well to be able to provide some guidance, advice, assistance, and maybe even more in line of what then our, our culture, our language, our tradition, our heritage, you know, the storytelling, so that they'll be able to, to put this in a production, that they'll be able to protect forever for their children, for our grandchildren and great-grandchildren. But yet, we're always so quick, you know, to, to try to stop something that is so great. And when this product is done, these 20 episodes are done, I can guarantee that every single individual here will be so proud of these productions. And it won't be just for our children here, that this will be also for everybody else who are coming to the island, for everyone who comes here and would know then that there's really something very different about our language, about our culture, about our traditions. And I know that sometimes we might say this is a cliche, but it is so true. Because once our culture, our language, our tradition, our heritage are gone, then truly, we're going to be just like everybody else. We won't have an identity. And maybe some of us may not care about that. But there is an awareness that's happening right now with our youth, our younger generation wanting to know who they are. But to know who they are, they need to know their past. And I think many of us, because we grew up in an era where we wanted to quickly, quickly after the war, rebuild our lives, become so westernized, because every single one of us in here has, our parents have ingrained in our souls, in our minds, in our hearts, that in order to compete in this world, we're going to have to be Americanized. And that was the start of killing our language. And I'm probably the last generation in this group here where I've gone through our school system, where we were penalized for every Chamorral word we used in school. And even when we go home, the same thing. And the only reason why I understand it is because I would hear my parents speak in Chamorral to each other and to the neighbors, but we were not permitted to speak the language. And now, my children blame me for the same thing that I am also doing, that my parents did to me. But that's starting to change and I'm very proud of our young people. And you know, we, we complain about some of the monies we use and yet, you know, I would, I would wish that instead, if we were going to, to complain about larger sums of money maybe that the government may have wasted, that instead we be diligent about that. But to nitpick on something that you can never replace with money is beyond me. Because this is not for us, this is for the future generation. So, I do support the bill. What number is this? 113. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much. Any other Senator wish to be heard? If not, then I will invite the sponsor to close.
Sijus Massey, Mr. Speaker, for inviting me to close. When this project came to me, Mr. Speaker, it was shared to me that Dug Dug Goose Inc. had four specific goals in mind. And it talked about the desire to preserve and protect our unique language, culture, stories, identity and the resources that we've been blessed with. They talked about instilling a confidence and pride in our unique identity and our island It talked about wanting to make sure that we inspire a deep love for our waters that surround us, our land and our people, and to promote the sustainable and healthy ways of living. And if you were at the public hearing, Mr. Speaker, and I know you were and other, and a lot of our colleagues were, you heard a lot of members in the community stood up and, and gave it its 100% support. And I want to say that Nihi is here, is here with a new development in response to the concerns of, of the issues of the loss of our language and our culture. And as I talked earlier, we And as I talked earlier, we, there was talks about if we were to quit and not preserve our language, our culture, our history, then by the year 2025, which is not too far away from here, we'd probably have our language extinct. Mr. Speaker, I want to say that this legislature, it's our 32nd, we are in our 32nd legislature now, but we as an august body, over time, has decided to invest in nonprofit entities who perform specific functions that the government of Guam can't do or will not do. And we believed, and we still believe, a lot of times it's the right thing to do. We've given monies to a lot of nonprofit organizations and just looking at you, I would say something like Sanctuary. And someone like that nonprofit organization didn't have to work through an RFP because it's not a for-profit entity. I bring that up to the discussion is because time and time there was talks about procurement. And I can understand and appreciate when people have concerns about protecting, I mean, about making sure that the funding sources go to specific missions, because our government is here to provide further services. In this report, there is a written testimony that was provided by a Mr. Jason Triplet, who was the community founder of Blue Pacific Film Community. And you and I know, Mr. Speaker, that when we talked about creating a film festival and the good speaker from, I mean, the good senator from Baragada was a part of trying to create a film office here on Guam so that we can showcase our beauty, our culture, our history, work with our people, and make sure that we create economic opportunity for our own local residents. And with those efforts, we finally, after almost, if not two or three decades, created a film office. And in Mr. Triplet's written testimony, he asked, he talked about concerns about allowing this much funding for a project like this here on Guam and it probably being a little bit over scaled. And he said that here on Guam, people here who love the industry and want, and that continue to put a lot of heart into it, that they take it as a hobby and not as a career choice is because the incentive is not always there in as far, it's too expensive. When I looked at the report from, the supplementary report from GBB, from Dook Dook, that was turned in, there was talks about the breakdown of the episodes and what was, and how much it would cost. And they came up with a budget of $127,000, Mr. Speaker. But they didn't talk about all the other additional costs that may be needed to produce something like this. And the opportunity of leveraging and partnering and working with other local entities and public entities here on Guam. As reported, the partnerships that this organization will work closely with, one that is brought to mind is PBS. And just for the use of production studio and prompts, it would cost them $30,000. For the use of production equipment would cost $40,000. For technical advice and consulting from PBS, there's another $1,200. And if they were to work on show airing this and PBS, it would cost them $26,000. So when we look at the expenses and the opportunities, I already know that a lot of the work that this Dook Dook Goose organization is working with, that a lot of the work is coming from their heart. And a lot of it is what we would call labor of love. And, Mr. Speaker, you and I know that when you do, when you work for a nonprofit organization, it's volunteerism or voluntold, meaning you do the work, you do the work behind the scenes, you do the marketing, you do the setup, you do everything, and it's almost for free. And of course, if you have to work publication costs to get it in the television or in the electronic media, it's going to cost you a lot of money unless they're one of the main sponsors. So in all fairness to this organization who came to us asking for seed money to start this new idea or this creative idea, I said, "Yeah, I want to give it a shot." And they had a breakdown of what we could probably assist them with, and they submitted that to us. Jason Triplet said, for those who don't know or are part of the film industry, he said there's another company who wanted to come in, talking about us funding them to do a movie here, showcase our people here, probably hire some people here, but it's going to cost us $1 million, one million. And earlier, Mr. Speaker, when a previous bill came up and it was asking for 1.5 million dollars, I said I didn't have a problem training our own people, giving the opportunity for our own people, giving, protecting, preserving, and making sure that we start giving our people the resources and tools they need so they can go out into communities and pass it forward or pay it forward or train others. The intent of the Tourist Attraction Fund, and I will continue to say it over and over and over, is to promote local interest and participation at all levels of visitor industry, to assist, when requested, both government and private entities in the development, implementation, and promotion of programs to further education, training, employment, assistance, and entrepreneurial development, to promote local cultural activities for residents, to promote items of local manufacture, to promote and assist in the development of adequate tourist facilitations and attractions, to assist appropriate government of Guam agencies in the enforcement of applicable laws and regulations relating to the visitor industry, to work with other entities to collect, analyze, evaluate, and regularly publish comprehensive data on the visitor industry, and to engage in all lawful activities to promote tourism reasonable or incidental thereto. Mr. Speaker, as Oversight Chair of Tourism and as one who believes that we need to protect, preserve, promote, perpetuate who we are as Guam, I have no problem saying I want to give this new creative development, one that was not solicited by GBB, the opportunity to make a program happen for our children and not just for our children. We have reports here, testimony from folks in the United States, one coming from a doctor candidate saying that a program like this will instill the values of our children, learning and knowing where their ancestors have come from. We have folks from the States who said, "This is such a wonderful idea. It is so good to know that we have people here who have thought of this idea and want to be able to pursue it." And, Mr. Speaker, I just want to say that in my heart of hearts, I have no hesitation, no reservations, no ill inclination that this will hurt our people or this in any way would be an embarrassment to our people. If anything, it will teach our children where they've come from, where their heritage is, who they are as island people. They will teach, it will teach them about protecting the environment, making Guam a cleaner, greener, healthier Guam. It will talk about the stories of their sinus and how their grandparents and great-grandparents have lived. And let me tell you, Mr. Speaker, when we look at opportunities of creating a program like this, the greater opportunity of providing new jobs. I'd be remiss if I didn't note that there was other, other community partnerships that Dook Dook Goose wanted to work with. And listed with them was the University of Guam and Department of Education's Chamorral Studies Program and Special Projects Division. And I say that, Mr. Speaker, because as we look at this development or this creativity or the creative idea on moving this program along, we invite, it invites opportunity to closer networking with other educational entities and other of our own public entities to benefit the community at large and not just the interested few. So at this time, I want to thank my colleagues who did speak in support of this legislation and, of course, those who spoke about the concerns that we can respect each other's decisions to say that we can agree to disagree. This is a very good bill, Mr. Speaker. It gives the opportunity for a nonprofit organization to come together, to create this filming and these stories so that our children and even our parents and grandparents can have a learning relationship as a family coming together as one. And I really, really hope that my colleagues will look at the greater picture of partnerships, of community involvement, of economic opportunities, of providing even new jobs. This bill can make that happen. So thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. And I really do ask my colleagues, put for but, please, put for but. Consider the opportunities for our children to learn more. Salamasi.
On the motion to send the bill down to third. Thank you. We will recess until nine tomorrow morning.